Order for December eighth, twenty twenty two. All three selected in the present town administrator is present. We have various members of various committees here. They'll be on the agenda. We have Mr. Bob Leonard, John Stevens. Bob Leonard for Mill Foil, John Stevens Old Home Day. We have the cemetery trustee here, chairman, John Morrison. And we should have, and also for the recording for the citizens of Dunbar, we have Mr. Leo Martell. And he'll post those as soon as he gets the moment. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes from last week. I will make a motion to accept the regular December first, twenty twenty two meeting. As amended.
My second.
Any discussion on those, Jim?
Motion to approve.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Justin, you'll do the next one.
I make a motion to approve the eight twenty eight P M. Non-public meeting minutes of December first, twenty twenty two. As amended.
I'll second those. And discussions, is there anything that needs to be, should be sealed at all, because it does discuss personnel. I don't see anything in there that would not be made public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm going to open the public comment, but as I said, majority of people here are on agenda tonight, so public comment background. Mr. Herbert?
Yep.
All right, okay. Okay, now, close public comment, bring back to the board. And we're going to start with town, the town business, and Mr. Bob Leonard is going to speak about Mill Foil. Hey, Bob.
How was your drive? Under ten minutes, I've been told.
You get a two-minute warning then, eh?
Okay, good. Well, I'm happy to report again, and I will at the town meeting in March, that we have no Mill Foil in Gorham Pond.
Wow.
That we can tell this fourth year in a row. The proselytory treatment that we had four years ago really did the trick. It was a two-year guarantee, and it's now on four years. What you have in front of you is a report that I get from New Hampshire Lakes on what we do. I call your attention to the highlighted portions for the funding summary. We got the fifteen fifty that we get from the state. That's to pay a paid lake host to sit down at the boat ramp on the weekends. We also had local donations of a hundred and fifty dollars. And then we had sixty-five, sixty left over from last year's funds that we didn't spend. So we had a total of seventeen sixty-five, sixty to work with for the year. We used up seventeen eleven, that's the expense summary. That was on the payroll to pay the paid lake hosts, so we still got fifty-four, sixty. That'll carry over till next year, just like the sixty-five, sixty did. We had a paid lake host who was Glenn Bodra. He's the son of the pastor across the street. He, he worked from May twenty-eighth to July twenty-fourth, and he did a hundred and thirty hours. And then we had volunteers from the town. They did a hundred and twenty-three hours, so we covered the period from May the twenty-eighth Memorial Day weekend up to Labor Day weekend. And we did it Fridays and, sorry, Saturdays and Sundays. And in some cases, we covered the holidays, so we covered like Memorial Day, that Monday, and we covered the Fourth of July. That type of thing, so that was good. And the rest of it is just their calculations at the state level. And we're basically percentage of payroll matching award to two hundred and eighty-two percent. So we're all, you need to have a hundred percent in order to apply for the funds for next year. We're at two eighty-two, so we're good at that, on that level. Page two of it just has the number of inspections, believe it or not, we had three hundred and seventy boats. At Gorham Pond, and when I say boats, I mean anything. A boat, a kayak, a canoe, any type of watercraft. And so we had three hundred and seventy inspections for the year. And the busiest times were like from ten to two, you know, during the day, which is kind of standard. And then that kind of breaks it out.
Was anything actually discovered on the inspections?
We haven't found anything in the past four years. We still have a couple of volunteer lake hosts that live near me on Holiday, Pete and Lois. They go around in their kayaks and they check all four ponds. We've got nothing showing whatsoever. If we do, we'll get somebody on it. Lean has already sent out the bids for diving. We, I did get contacted by Amy, by Gina, because I left her a voicemail. Did she see you or couldn't know?
She did.
Yeah, so I left a message for Amy just to make sure that she got contacted by the diver. So we will have a diver in the background. And if we need that diving money, it'll come out of the fund that's designated for next year, if we need it. But that, I can't see that happening right now.
It's a great summary.
Yeah.
And with good news, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's always happy to give good news. How'd that do?
Six minutes, maybe?
All right.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for keeping track of that.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Okay, next, next on the agenda, we have, be safe going home now.
All right, we'll do.
I'll go slow.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Hey, John, from the Old Home Day.
Good.
Talk to us. Much bigger question, twenty twenty two.
We met Monday, Monday night last to discuss, discuss things we, we knew until now and talked about a lot of that stuff. And bottom line, we decided to request a level.
Perfect.
Making our job easy.
Anything I can do to help? Yeah, we sent back, what was it, five hundred and sixty-five dollars to the, to the, to the town at the end of the year. But what we're hearing so far, the, so you, 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 you could almost say, well, maybe we could make do with less. But what we're hearing is that the prices on most things we have found so far are going up.
Maybe the five hundred dollars would be enough to cover it.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Thing is, I, I have.
That five hundred lapses to the town.
Oh, I, no, I understood, but we're talking about the budget amount, he's going to ask the same amount as last year, so it's low budget, which is fine. I, I would not cut, yeah, I would not cut it at all.
Okay, good.
If you have any extra, you could help them with some more lights outside. Getting a little dismal out there this year.
Old Home Day, though, I like to say it was, in my opinion, another great year for Old Home Day. I thought the refreshments were good, the ice cream was good, the, the stage at one of your benefactor springs was outstanding. Entertainment was good. It was a great peaceful day for Dunbar residents, and I'd like to see that continue. So kudos to the entire committee for stepping up the plate and making it happen.
One of the things I'm going to add this year, Mike, is hopefully the First Regiment is going to camp on the lawn.
Okay.
And for the day.
Okay.
And go through there.
Well, porta-potties, no big, Doug Latrines, please.
What's that? Oh, no Doug Latrine.
Little piles.
Well, as far as porta-potty goes, by, by then, the bathroom in the town of Old Homestead.
No, it won't be.
No.
Now, I think we decided before that started that we're going to keep the porta-potties for that Old Home Day at least, to keep the majority of that traffic outside. No, the problem is, the thing is, we, we use this building in the past. The problem is, we have a limited sewage disposal system, septic system. And the thing is, you throw three hundred people in there on a day, let's say only a hundred people use it, it's overwhelmed, and then we have backups. And then I can't have people come to work and not, I can't have my staff using porta-potties, and it just, it just becomes ugly.
Yeah, and the cleaning before they get back to work and all that, so.
And even, I was, about three years ago, we had a damaged toilet because, not intentionally, but it was damaged. And so the thing is, it created more of an expense than it, than really helped.
No, I, 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 I just figured that I'd mention it just in case.
No, that's very good, and that sounds exciting to have them here.
Yeah, that, that's another reason to reserve funds so that we can, for those guys.
Yeah, absolutely, okay. John, I appreciate you coming in.
I think we have more.
You have more?
What?
You have more?
Just, just, just info. The, the, the first, first regiment, 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 they also fire rifles. So we will notify any of the horse people.
Would it be worthwhile to have them, think about marching in the parade, too?
Well, that's what they're going to do.
Okay, good, yes.
Yeah, I've been in touch with them. Also, with a fife and drum corps out of Portsmouth. And between the two of them, we're looking at two thousand dollars in fees. But they, the fife and drum, like, they'll march in the parade, the First Regiment will march in the parade, and then the fife and drum will do a short concert of their songs or routines and stuff like that after, after they get done marching. And that, most of them are ten to eighteen years of age, and they work in tandem with the First Regiment. They're separate five oh one C threes, but at the same time, so.
They're going to pay us a couple thousand?
Total, yeah.
Nice try.
Well, these, these kids are, some of them are home schooled, private schools, whatever, but they're, they're good musicians. And they, you know, they have to learn how to play the drums and everything else before they even get to march. So I had a nice conversation with the lady that does all the booking in that forum, and they're very popular, you know? It's authentic, but they, these are, they're authentic as far as history goes, but they're not like the Sons of American Revolution that are relatives. These are just people that like history, and for both groups. Hey, Don, Don, was the Never's Band going to play? Was, was the Never's Band going to play or not? I don't know, we haven't decided on that. Right, okay, because, because they, the, the, the two thousand, it's a factor.
Well, I'm going to be, I feel rest assured that we got a good committee. I feel that you're going to have a great job. Whatever you choose is going to be outstanding, because I think is, I think for two years in a row, we've had some great, great entertainment for the town. And it really has worked out well. I'm really been pleased.
And is the, the, the rec committee, committee going to be here tonight at all, Gina?
Nope.
Nope, not tonight.
Okay, all right. Because, because if they were, I just wanted to offer them, or say, would, would they like to be part of Old Home Day also?
I think it'd be a nice coordination of.
I'll send you their emails.
Oh, great.
Because they communicate with our office regularly.
Okay, good, good, because, because as far as the kids, kids game, that has been a little bit low because the P T O has it running down there.
Understood, understood, I understand. I think time is important, too, I assume you call, some of the kids stuff is at the very end of the day, and the thing is, they can't hold out that long.
And, and, and speaking of days, we are looking at August twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and maybe in just September, depending on the, the availability of the certain.
No, you, you're like, you always pick a good day, at least the last two years are two for two, good weather. You gotta pick another good day with good weather.
Twelfth is my birthday, so.
Mine, too, so.
Well, the regiment isn't available on the twelfth, so we usually go nineteenth through the twenty-sixth.
Just cancel your other item. And mine is, mine, my birthday is on the twelfth.
We always.
Right, okay, but thank you, okay, anything else, John?
I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, any questions?
I think you know that Gollum wants to be on the Old Home Days when you get another. You just do that, you have got it.
Okay. Okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys, thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move right on to the next item, cemetery. What's your review? Don, you're in the right chair, so stay right there, just talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you, George.
You got a copy?
Yep, right in front of you.
And basically, we're going to keep it flat.
Nice going.
It's in the back.
For the, the Old Home Day.
Okay.
Didn't you get a package?
I didn't get a package.
No, he got a whole package.
He got all the back.
They're all paperclipped together, all the budgets.
Oh, my God, Dave, they're hiding on me. I thought you may have taken it like you usually do. Don, momentary technical difficulty, but I'm, I'm good to go.
I see you moved some stuff around, but you kept your budget file, which is just what we actually wanted you to do. Put it in the areas you need it.
Yep.
For repair, whatever, and keep it within your budget. That's exactly what we had asked you to do last year, so I'm happy to see that.
Well, we're looking at the, on the fence repair for the cemetery.
Yep.
We're looking at doing the section right out here to the gate, that, that distance there this year. Do the gate and the other side the following year in twenty-four.
Sure.
So, you know, we need to do it, we're going to have, we're looking at heritage posts, five-by-fives with caps on them, so that'll protect the, you know, from water and stuff like this. And I think it'll, we're going to try to keep it as authentic as possible.
Okay, I'm concerned about your mowing budget, though.
The what?
Your mowing budget, cemetery maintenance mowing.
That's the second year, we're going into the second year of a three-year contract.
Okay, but last year it was more than.
That was because we had the ground fault radar, and we just put it in that category.
Okay.
And, you know, it, we had the money, we just, you know, we should move stuff around.
It had nothing to do with the mowing, personally.
Yeah, but we left it the same, it had nothing to do with the mowing.
We have an actual contract for that. Okay, I wanted, I wanted to just be reassuring, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's a good idea, though, with fuel going up to check that stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was good.
So.
Because our contract's for another year, something like that, with the company we have now, isn't it?
What now?
Our contract is for another year.
I, you know, yeah. We just finished the first year, we got two more years on it.
Excellent.
So twenty-three and twenty-four, then it's up for date, you know?
Okay, we did have somebody, you weren't in last week, but we did have a person, comment, that doesn't live in town, but they have somebody that.
We all got the email.
Is here, and they're very happy to see that the cemetery is looking up.
Well, it's appreciated, any comments we get, and I get, personally get several people telling me that they, they really like the change.
Well, I know from years ago, it's, it's a big difference when you drive by them and they look respectful now, you know, and that's very important, I think, for the town.
Well, our group have made a lot of changes, you know, we put the roads in in Page Corner, the Curveins Garden, you know, we're spraying for weeds and poison ivy and stuff like this. We're, and we're trying to spread it around to all the cemeteries, doing something there.
Yep.
And that, so it's not just one project and that, but, you know, there's, there's a couple of them that are, you know, we've done phase one, phase two, we're looking to do in phase three. And that'll be another day.
I just got one more question for you, Don. How did you guys make out that maybe we were possibly doing some cleaning or washing of the stones? Did that ever happen?
We've got the guy coming in, what is it, May?
May sixth.
May sixth, and we'll have an hour inside here looking, showing videos and what to do, and then an hour outside with actually doing the cleaning. And they use the same material that we're using, D two solvent, biodegradable solvent. And so we want to train as many of our citizens, so between now and then, we'll have, have them together, so. No, that's the works, it's just getting it booked, and it has to be kind of warm.
Yep.
And that, so that's outcome. We're also got, you know, the monument repair, and people coming, too, so that's all. Part of what we're, we're trying to do is take care of the, the stones that are really in sad shape or broken off or tilting. Get those straightened up.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, I'll, I'll stop while I'm ahead.
Okay.
Sounds good, see, you're learning.
You listen better if you don't, if you keep it short. Don, what's the date on that, that class?
May sixth.
May sixth, that's projected as of right now for in between one, one and three.
Yeah, one and three, that's a Saturday.
Back about twelve years ago, I cleaned all of Stark Cemetery stones. Someone hired me from New York to clean all of the stones. Took me about a week to clean every one of them. Quite a, quite a project, and they, they went from black to white.
So about a month, you should have these done.
Yeah, well, I'll be gone.
Yeah, we are, we are going to post it when we get a solid date, we are going to post it on the website.
I cleaned a few in here also, so friends of mine have asked me to go in and clean them, I think I got permission from Don.
That would be a great project for the, maybe children at school, maybe the older kids, to do some cleaning. You get to look at the age of the stones and.
I actually like them when they're painted and looking, but.
Yeah, but they get really dark after a while, and it's not good for the stone itself either, you know?
Well, lichen, they, they can break down the rocks all the time now.
Well, just that black is, is a fungus, and that eats away at the stone.
Always a fungus among us. Thank you for coming in.
One thing we're trying to do is to get more citizens involved with the cemetery. And, you know, the cleaning is one way, and somewhere down the line, we'd like to have, you know, maybe when we, we could do it upstairs, once that's available. Have kind of a informational, where they can come and ask us about questions, we'll have some of our vendors there also, so they can, you know, people, you know, they put it off, but if you give them a little nudge, why, they'll come.
Yep.
So that's on the deal.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, moving right along with you, John.
Don is up here.
Drink? Oh, yeah, are you doing the building department?
Yes, Donna asked me to do that.
If you would start with the building, then.
Is that what you want to start with?
Yeah, I have a good one, we'll see you later.
Building department first.
Last week, when I met with the board, I presented a wage study, and during the meeting, the board amended the, or the raise or the adjustment to the administrator of that department down to two percent. And when I went over the numbers based on that new calculation, Donna pointed out to me that as of April of next year, she would be increasing five percent under the step five, or five percent under the step three wage scales that we had. So if we follow the two percent recommended adjustment from last week's rate, she will actually decrease seventy-four cents. Donna's coming in on her fifteenth anniversary, and I would like to ask the board to reconsider the four percent increase as originally recommended, so that we can keep her in line with what she would have received, and then she can be put into the six-step scale, wage steps at.
So it's a seventy, seventy, seventy-four cents delta to correct the, the oversight.
Yeah.
See that, Dave?
Well, what's the five percent you had up on the top?
Well, that, if we had not done anything with changing our step wage scale, we would have been three, she would be going up to.
Five percent, okay.
And that would have given her twenty-six oh eight.
But, but now we're actually talking two percent plus three percent.
No, it would be two percent.
You're saying without the cola, this is what it would be?
Right, it would be, and so she's.
I'm good with it, we talked about another point.
Seventy-four cents, yeah, it just keeps it on the floor.
Yeah, and the longevity is what we were trying to focus on, changing maybe the increase from year to year, or every two years in this case.
Yeah, it wasn't our intention to make her go backwards, so.
Right, right, okay.
Exactly.
So that being said, she and I went over her budget with the recommended four percent increase on the original wage scale that would adjust increase her wages to the fifty-six, seven, sixty. Over time, she's left the same, seeing it's, it's worked for the last couple of years. The building administrator inspector, we had, the board has revisited that pay scale to a stipend. The wages are lower slightly, and that would include the four percent increase, twenty-five dollar mileage reimbursement that was agreed upon, and then the support for the department fund.
So that's the actual with the twenty-five dollars a week, or?
Yep, and then it's also includes a little buffer above, just under five hundred for the assistant inspector. Otherwise, everything else is flat. She does say in the bottom that she's been carrying the supplies, building inspector, excuse me, supplies billing department of three thousand for the last few years in maintaining the meeting room printer, along with the wide copier printer. And what she is finding is that we go over a lot for the copies, and there's a penalty for overages, and she wants to know if that's something that the board wants to acknowledge or move to a different department, or she just wants to point out that there is cost that is associated with this meeting room printer that is all the committees that come into the.
Yeah, but she's still under her budget. Yeah, she's still under the budget, so.
She is, but are we okay with just leaving it there the way it is? Okay, then there will be no change.
Yeah, that's, okay, that looks good. All right, so it's basically level services again.
It is, absolutely, yep.
All right, you want to go through your department?
Well, planning and zoning?
Yes, planning and zoning.
Again, Don and I went through this, it's, it's basically a flat budget. The only change is the fees and services, which is where we enter the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning membership fee that we participate in. They offer us a lot of support services, it's based on the per capita, and it's going up nineteen dollars, so it's basically flat.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
Any questions? All right, let's talk about.
I still have the highway.
Highway for Jeff.
Yep, Jeff is here, he's keeping the budget.
Thank you, sir, for coming in.
No problem.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, guys, how are you doing tonight? Pretty good. I don't know if you looked it over at all. It said level funded.
Correct, you did well. Level services.
Yeah.
So you have increased in every payroll account or anything?
Yes, yep, Lean helped me out with that, I believe it's correct.
It is.
Or very close to it.
Yeah, I, I made a couple, three more dollars.
And I'm so happy you, you were proactive and raised the fuel costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't go crazy with it. I mean, we're going to be a little close, but who knows what's going to happen with fuel? I didn't inflate it a lot because.
But you did a little bit, which is good.
At the end of the day, we've got, we've got to burn what we've got to burn, we've got to pay for it, you know, so.
Good.
I accounted for that, the mowing, I increased a little because we've been steadily going up a little bit on that, I mean, there's two reasons. The equipment rental for the mower and the guy doing it has crept up a little bit due to costs, like every other subcontractor. And also, we're mowing more, we're going to pick up another over mile of mowing, you know, coming into next year, so I bumped that up, just kind of evened it out with it. Budgeted the eighty-five, spent ninety-five this year, and I just bumped it up to ten. And again, that plus or minus.
Makes sense with the new roads and the fuel.
Yeah, I mean, the, the new road is going to be a nice road to mow, it's all grass, there's no brush, so it's a good road to mow, no obstacles, but it still takes time. You know, and, and.
Salt and sandy, I notice those are.
Yeah, the, the salt, I bumped up five thousand, as we talked earlier, we had an increase, I have, if you look at what I've spent, what I have left, we got sixty thousand left there. But I've ordered probably over ten thousand dollars worth of salt that will be delivered, so we'll be, you will use all that seventy, so I think the increase was about five dollars a ton for what we paid last year, so I put a five thousand up. And I mean, that's, again, that's.
As you call it, the name of the company changed, but it's essentially the same thing.
Yeah, the, the winter subcontractors, we're in good shape with those, I didn't mess with that, I left the number the same. I mean, at the end of the day, we got to remove the snow, you know, and that, everything kind of hinges around that. I mean, if we had a horrible year and we end up spending a hundred thousand, we spend a hundred thousand. I mean, that's something out of our control, and the sand stayed pretty much the same. So when you get, you get to the end, when you do all the magic, it's like an eighteen thousand dollar increase.
Just, I was just wondering if, I know we went up on the prices for the winter contractors, do you think that will account for that? I see, I see your actual numbers for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
I guess, I know it depends on our snow.
Well, right now, we've been very lucky, we, you know. I, I think it's, it'll, it'll work.
Is it?
Because we actually had increased it last year, we had carried eighty thousand for a number of years, and I bumped it up ten thousand last year in anticipation of some things. And I'm comfortable with leaving it like that, I mean, you know.
How many trucks does that entail, Jeff, five or four?
Three large trucks and one small truck rentals, and then, of course, all the in-house costs with the town trucks. Of course, all the in-house costs with the town trucks.
Yeah.
That's, that doesn't come out of that, they come out of their own, you know, salaries and maintenance and all that. So that's just what we're renting right now today.
Yep.
And I mean, that, to me, that's the only thing we're really solid, we had to go on.
It's a, it's a pretty good deal for the town. This is gonna be year two of our paving contract.
Yes, we're gonna be coming to year two of that.
I notice you ask, we ask every year for, in the past, what was it, what was that, a hundred K?
Yes.
And this year is being used to pay the bond?
Well, I, I think, I don't know exactly when our bond payments are due, you have to help me out with it.
February and August.
So we have two payments in twenty-three?
Interest only, February and the principal and interest.
Can you answer Mike's question though, it's really not being pulled out of Jeff's budget.
No, I, it was always, it was always actually. Yeah, I think what Mike's getting at is in lieu of raising the hundred thousand dollars I put into it. The theory was we would take that and apply that hundred thousand dollar.
Towards the bond.
Toward the bond.
Which was already been proved, so we're on the hook for that.
Yes. Instead of, yeah, exactly.
Which is why we kinda sold that to the voters.
And that, and that was our intention.
Yes, exactly.
Not asking for a hundred and paid.
No, and then you have, you have like two hundred and sixty thousand in there for incidentals which may crop up through the year.
Well, yeah, that's the, the road repairs we do and reconstruction projects.
That's all the short roads too, all the other fifty-hands.
Yes, yeah. We still, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about it the other day a little bit.
Just under six.
There's like, just under six hundred thousand left. We had budgeted one point three, we had a pretty significant pavement increase, I think we did pretty good.
I think so.
I mean, really, I mean.
For the metal roads that you cut?
No, I, I think it all worked out.
And the quality, I, I mean, it looks great.
Yeah, and I, residents are happy, I get a lot of compliments, people like the ride.
It's a, it's a huge difference, I think, coming.
Oh, no, it's, it was a very, I'm happy we, we saw a way clear doing it, it's been a worthwhile project and it will make the winter maintenance easier as well.
If it just gets you up to power where you can keep up with it after that, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, like, we've had this discussion hundreds of times, it never goes away.
Right, you're always gonna have.
If you didn't have some, you wouldn't have a job.
It's gonna be either a guy like me or a gal like me is gonna be in here, you know, every year, hey, we gotta do this, we gotta do it. It's just, it's the way it goes.
Budget looks good, sir, thank you.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we ended up with. I know if you go through it, you'll see a couple spots like some maintenance, we, on the vehicles and stuff, we still got some outstanding bills and stuff like that. Couple items I held off on because, you know, we always seem to get some bizarre weather.
Just keep in mind, if you would, the actual probably was updated when I sent him this working and that was in November, so.
Right, so we're missing one month.
So it's still, yeah, still a moving target.
Yeah.
Just, just FYI, Woody, uniforms for your department?
Yes.
Woody has renewed, we renewed the contract?
Yeah, he was talking to Pete and I about it just yesterday or this morning or something.
And so it's all thumbs up with me?
Yeah, it almost sounded like a good deal to me, I agree with what, he does all the legwork and whatever deal he can mix behind us.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody's happy with the service.
Okay, you're gonna stick around, you're gonna, you're not multiple for it?
Yes.
Okay, good, we're gonna move on to mailbox items next, if that's okay? Anything else for the, from your?
No, I'm good, thank you.
We are too, it was very good budget presented. Okay, mailbox. All right, let's talk about quotes, Lean, High Prairie Electric.
Okay, well, the board recalls that we had been inspected by the Department of Labor for safety. One of the big items that was on the list was emergency exit lights that we were, that we did not pass in many of the buildings. I had a list of those, which buildings and how many they needed and I attempted to reach out to three electricians. One has still not returned the call, but I did get two and you have both of them in front of you. There is one difference on the second one, that's numbered number two, when he came through and looked at this office here. I had gotten three exit lights from the first quote, whereas the second quote said he would not be able to put a light, exit light over the door, the physical door in the hallway going through to the cemetery. But he could, he said he would recommend just putting it on the inside of the office because there's a window on the door that's where you can see. And that would be adequate too, so there's only two on this, on the second quote.
I don't see any here for the library, does the library need any?
The library's in there, should be, it should be.
How many do you have here? You have here is town offices, police department.
Highway garage.
Fire department. Oh, it says the library right there, it is, okay. And then highway garage. Very reasonable.
That is not, not so much. Let's not mention prices, just.
But we'd have to reduce it by one quantity if we have them install the same number.
Yeah. But like you said, that was four fifty, so.
Yeah.
I, I, because I have no problem making a decision tonight, I'm sorry.
No, we've reached out and we've got the two bids back.
I don't know when you come to book Justin.
We don't really have to change that one, that's the only one we'd have to reduce by one.
Correct, yep.
It's not gonna be another.
We don't have to even talk about it.
No, I don't think so either.
We've done, they've done work with the town on both of them.
Yeah, and they're the ones that are doing their current library and top office.
Oh, they are, okay.
So we know the, the work's reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay. Only thing is, if this, if bid number one was a little bit better, I think is I would have leaned towards that Dunbar, no business, but the thing is you gotta be competitive. So you wanna make a motion for me to even that?
I will. I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Irish Electric, hop into New Hampshire for a total of forty-eight fifty-two. To take care of the emergency exit lighting for town offices, police department, fire department, library and highway garage as proposed in his quote.
Accept one, any further discussion on that? No, here or none, make it happen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that'll come out of this year's building maintenance account?
Yeah, I think we still have enough.
Thing is, I like to make sure if it can't get to it in this county year, then we.
Encumber it?
Encumber the one.
Can you sign, is it, ask for a signature on that?
Yes.
And then what I'll do is when I scan it to the company that we've accepted their bid, I will include the Department of Labor so they can just check it off and know that we're working on.
That's a good idea, because that was a majority of some of their things they had.
Yep.
Do you know, Lean, without me looking at that, did that take care of some of the upstairs ones in the new area up there?
No.
Okay.
No, just the ones that the Department of Labor looked at, which were the travel areas.
When he's over there, if I meet with him, I'll ask him to look at that room too to make sure that that all meets it, we have some over there, but.
Yep.
I think that might need one or two more over there.
Okay.
Okay, I want a motion on that, we already discussed it last week.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Watford to the energy committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. We discussed this last week and he was nominated by the committee.
I'll second that, any discussion on that, Jeff? I, he's already kind of went meeting and just for the record, I think he was very knowledgeable, I thought he was a good addition to the committee. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
It's nice to get new people, new faces on these committees.
Oh, yeah, it's great to have them.
Okay, we have a couple emails on, from Woody regarding what's going on at transfer station. First of all, compact, I haven't written it, I think, but compact repairs are starting this week. It's gonna be down for a couple more days, they're still working on it, can crusher's on route, we know about that.
Lean, if you wanna email back Woody and let him know, if he calls or texts me, I'll try and show up there when the, when the can crusher comes in to help him inspect it.
Oh, wonderful, yeah.
What's it, what's it, the inspection, sorry, you're just.
He just wanted to make sure that when he's accepting it for the town, there was no hidden damage, he asked for a second set of eyes.
Sure. He's got an issue here with the roof.
Unless you wanna do it.
Doesn't matter, I'm gonna give you that one to you because you gave me the, I'm still pending on the watershed.
Oh, you are, okay.
And then you were invited too, if you were so inclined.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I got, I was the volunteer last week.
Flood lane.
Yes, sir.
He's not here, we volunteer.
Did you fall asleep on that?
No, it's not yet, thirteenth.
Oh, the thirteenth's coming up, okay, gotcha.
Okay, the roof, what's going on?
That's actually an email from Greg Miller, he said that when he did the work, as he had quoted us, he did, and then he went back to inspect it when it was raining. To see if there was any leaks going on and he, and he says it in his email.
He didn't see any leaks.
He did not see any leaks, but there's some areas that are funky and.
He said some of the pearlins may need to get replaced in the next two, three years.
He just wanted to give us an upgrade on it.
Yeah, that's nice, okay, and then snow removal, we wanna talk about snow removal for the library.
When I meet with Woody, when I do the can crusher, I'll let him know our thoughts about buying a smaller snow blower and see what he thinks.
Because I, I don't wanna complicate the matter having to transport one back and forth.
And the other thing is, I'll let him know we wanna use, Jeff, what's this stuff called that you use for the girl's calcium chloride?
Safe step, safe step.
It's, it has a degree of environmentally safe, it's.
Now, Jeff, you picked that up, you picked that up for over here?
Yeah, we get it, just get it at the hardware store. As they have it, as comes the need, we supply it for the school too, Lee at the school lets me know and we just get him some bags and as he needs it.
Would you mind if the guys from the transfer station let you know there to get us some for that?
Yeah, we can get them some too.
What we're gonna do is, um, right inside the basement door, there's enough room to store a little bit of it right there.
What we typically do here, we have a pail here and as it gets empty, the gal usually notifies and we replenish that pail.
Perfect.
To the school, we just get, it comes in a bag form and we just leave the bags at the school and Lee takes care of it. I just assume we do the same up there.
Okay, that's what we do.
Stockpile five or six bags up there and see how it goes.
If they wanna put a pail up front, they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, I let them handle, but we, because typically everybody pitches in at the town office on these walkways. John usually does the initial shoveling, but if Lean or anybody else comes in early and there's a little bit of snow, they'll grab the shovel, clean the walk up, throw a little ice melt down.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Mary, she says I'll, I'll always keep the front open.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, everybody here kinda pitches in and helps us do it, so.
Yeah, we don't wanna slip it off.
What do you know about that, that'll be good, okay? Get that fraction, yeah.
Yeah, we can get that supplied and just.
We'll send them an email.
Okay.
Small snow blower and ice melt.
Yeah, what do you?
A snow blower.
Safe step and he'll be careful.
We won't purchase that on the highway.
No, we'll let him purchase a transfer station.
Okay.
Sounds good.
They didn't put heated pipes on there, they melt the snow.
Shut it, we didn't think.
All right, all right, all right, get this back to order here. Dunbar library key and schedule, obviously they're gonna put some keys in the, in the building maybe?
I did, I went over the key and schedule with the commercial door department at my office. And this is how I went with it unless we change it. And I did do two master keys, one for Mary and one for yourself.
For the office or my, my set that's getting out?
Either way you want.
I probably keep it in the office.
So the one master key will work the entire building.
Okay.
So there's a separate lock to go in the basement in case you want just a maintenance person to go down.
Okay.
There's a separate lock to go into Mary's, the lock for the front door.
Yeah, there's a schematic there that I got from Mary.
The lock for the front door will also work the lock to go in the upstairs room.
How does that work on the fire department?
They have the master key also.
Oh, so there'll be three master keys out there, okay.
The, they'll also have the touchpad, so you're not gonna be using the keys typically.
Okay, good.
You're gonna have the touch codes, so.
Okay.
But the touch codes are something you can change in that room however you wanna do it.
Right.
You can do it just like you're doing here, give multiple people different numbers and it's gonna be able to be done right on your phone, Lean.
Oh, nice, I like that feature, I wish we could do it on the air.
So he, I've asked him to come out and give you a two, three, or once it's all installed, walk you and Mary through how to change the numbers and add them and all that to your phones.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, you gonna open up a public comment once again?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Lean, you said, who are the people in the rec committee, do you know the offhand?
You remember a couple weeks back, Leo?
Yeah, I'm just wondering who the names are.
Krista and, I'm drawing a blank on the other one.
Okay, well, what I, what I'm wondering is if I can get an email for one of them, you said you had one?
I have emails for them.
Because I have all of the sports banners at my house.
Oh, my, yes, I.
And I'd like to see if we can get them, they don't wanna put them back up at the school.
Okay.
Unless the rec committee can strong arm them.
They have, one of those buildings at the school is the rec committee building, in my understanding.
Right, but I don't wanna just put it in there.
She was gonna have it repaired and she said they went down there and looked for something and somebody just fixed it.
I, I guess what I'm looking for is maybe they can help me get them to who they belong to, rather than throwing them out, because that's what the school was gonna do.
Those are all the banners like previous basketball?
Yeah, right.
Send your name email.
Yeah, right, so, yeah, I'd like, I don't wanna throw them out, I'd like to get them to where they belong, you know?
Thank you, thank you, Lean. Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to Lean, town manager.
I just wanted to let the board know that when I was preparing for the meeting tonight, I was sitting in my office. Jen was sitting in the tax collector, town clerk office and Judy was in the tax office and all of a sudden the alarms started screaming. So I turned them off and I went and sat back down, oh, actually, I opened the door and I saw Jen come out and she's, I said, I said, did you do that? She said, no, did you do that? I said, no, so we sat back down. Few minutes later, Sergeant Tyler comes into the building and I just got off the phone and I said, are you here about the alarm? I disarmed it, he said, yep, but we got a call saying there was a panic button in the tax collector's office. So we all walked down to the tax collector, Judy was, had stuff all over and she says, oh, look, it fell on the floor. So the panic buttons work and we didn't even.
I didn't know you had a panic button.
We all have panic buttons.
They all panic.
When somebody gets angry and we don't.
Taxes are high.
But they're silent, it sounded the alarm, but nobody knew where it came from and at least five.
Has it been rectified or mounted correctly?
I just put it in a safer location.
I've come in a couple times to sign at night and I had the pad wrong or something, I don't know what I do wrong, but leave the door open or close it, it always goes off in the conservation commission pepper case.
It's a good. Scared one.
But it is, it's nice to know, it's reassuring that we are being monitored and.
Safe.
Safe, yeah. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, Justin. Okay.
I contacted Pro Technologies.
Yes.
This week.
The telephones.
More, more about the availability to make sure that they've never got back to me last week, to see if they could monitor our new elevator. They assigned it to a new guy, which sounds like he has a handle on it, he did call Always Clear Elevator Company and talk with the owner of that and they're coordinating. It sounds like it's something that they can do, because it's fairly new, they haven't done it yet, so we're gonna be a first case study, but they sound like they're gonna do it for us.
Yeah.
I imagine there'll be some separate billing for that, I'm not sure what, but.
But it'll hopefully just be part of the overall billing approach.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, so we don't bring in a second company to do it.
I think that would be more, much more expensive.
I think they're familiarizing themselves on our, our time to start, so.
Guinea pigs. Guinea pigs, right?
That's good, because their, their current monitoring is very affordable and they've been, they're pretty good to work with.
And I don't have any more complaints from the, from the town providers either.
We haven't had a misfire.
Remember how problematic it was? Okay, I, I.
We have not had a misfire, and I'm aware of it.
Finishing up, I spoke with JR about moving that water heater again and where I was looking to stick on the corner.
Yeah.
And he was willing to go down, take another look at that and get back to us. All of the hardware and doors from our commercial department are coming tomorrow. The electric, the Irish Electric that we just approved called backup on the three missing breakers for his panel. Company said we haven't started building the panel yet because we don't have those three breakers, he was trying to get them to ship the panel without it.
Gotcha.
He's very frustrated with him, he's not sure where to go, he has tried other companies, they told him it would be another five weeks for his panel. So Chaconne called him back, because they can't finish the flooring without finishing, they can't finish a lot of the elevator, the flooring, any of it, so. They need heat before they can do the flooring, so he's temporarily wiring the heat. So that they can get the flooring done and then the elevator guys can be done, so. I think that within next week or so, they'll be winding down on all those items.
What about the drywall inside?
The drywall's all done except for the other part, the new part.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to him about his schedule yet.
What was the last thing I wanted to, oh, we, we had good rains, are they starting to continue to fill the, some of them?
When I was there last week, I haven't looked this week, but they were half full already.
Okay, great, great. Okay, great, great.
So, yeah.
I just, I, it's been opportune time, the ground still, we're not frozen, the water's still going into the.
Yeah, I don't know if he was here this week at all, but they were already half full.
Okay, good, good.
Um, and I got one last thing. Town hall. Oh, were you able to contact to let him know about the thirty two for material supplies for the drywall, you're gonna send an email?
I sent him an email, oh, actually, did I, yes, because he sent you his response in an email, so I responded to that email. Are you talking about asking for a, a letter?
From Tom Crisanna?
A quote?
Nope, not that letter.
That part, I didn't, don't think I sent it forward.
Now, what about the letter, did we send a letter to Guy about?
I sent an email asking him to give us a quote so we can base our thank you on that.
He already gave the quote.
It doesn't say it anywhere in the email.
Now, there's a financial, what, what was the cost?
Yeah, I know the other guy was fifteen thousand, but he didn't give us a total quote.
We need a total quote, so we can at least put it in, put it in financial terms for him.
I'll, I'll send him another email.
Okay. Before the record.
He might be unclear what we're trying to.
This is, this is unclear, this is unclear for some people.
I'll pick up, I'll pick up.
This is unclear for some people, what we're talking about is the, some of the drywall that's going up in the, in the oldest part of this building is being installed for no cost.
And the taping.
And the taping, what we're, what we're trying to do is a, is a thank you, we're gonna give him a, a thank you note acknowledging their value so he can deduct it and use it in his business for whatever tax reasons he can use it as a donation.
I'll pick up the phone and call Tom too because I don't, is this guy, Guy, does he need the ma, the material?
I would think so.
Burst?
I would think so.
So, okay.
We need to get that moving.
So I don't know if Tom's giving you a check and we have to accept or how that's working, so.
Okay, all right.
However you figure that out.
Yep, that's fine, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with Guy and Tom.
Tape to you, anything else?